It is seven o'clock and we are going to reconvene the regular meeting of the Luciemar Unified School District Board of Education for May 7th, 2024. The board has been in closed session since 5:31 and I have one item to report out. In closed session, the board took action to appoint Mr. Joseph Giever as Executive Director of Student Services, effective July 1st, 2024. The vote was five yeses with trustee Naomi Pernier voting no. Mr. Giever is in the audience with us if you could stand up. Congratulations and I'll just reiterate, we're excited, we're willing to step into this role and look forward to the school year ahead. Great, thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Fawcett to introduce our flag saluters this evening.
All right, thank you Vice President Stewart. I'd like to invite up Zach and Grant, please come on up to the mic. I'm gonna read a little statement about you before you lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Zach is a fifth grade student and vice president of our student council. Zach enjoys playing sports and also helps lead the health and wellness community or committee through student council. And Grant is a sixth grade student and the student council president at Ocean View. He is highly active in Boy Scouts and helps plan and organize intramural sports at Ocean View as well. And we're very lucky to have you both here leading us in the pledge and it is your turn, go ahead.
Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done gentlemen, you representing the Cougars very, very well.
Great, thank you.
We're gonna move on to business, you're welcome to stay with us, I know it's a school night too and you're welcome to leave whenever you need to leave, so. But thank you for being there, we appreciate you representing. Now we turn to our, which is great, usually an opportunity to welcome our student representatives back to the board. But it's also bittersweet tonight because we're also gonna say goodbye to you as we close up this academic, the 23, 24 academic year. So we've got a little something for you afterwards as well. But we would love to, at the end of your report, if you could let us know what your plans are post-graduation, post-high school, that would be great, we'd love to hear that. And so we'll start with Katie Sloko from Central Coast New Tech.
Hello everyone, I hope you're having a great week. This is a very bittersweet moment for me as it's my last board meeting. I have been so honored to represent my school and report to you each month and I appreciate all of your time and support. I am very excited to introduce our new student body president for next year and I know she will do an amazing job. It is my pleasure to introduce Elizabeth Moore.
Hello, it is good to see you all again this evening. I'm so excited for next year and the ability to continue to create fun and community-driven events for our school. I would also like to tell you the amazing students on our board for next year. Starting off with our vice president who will be Landon Pinmark, our secretary will be Mason Lang, our treasurer is Alex Cortez, our reporter will be Yuri Gutierrez and our senior class representative is Riley Rigs.
Thank you Elizabeth, now on to our report. Even though our year is coming to an end, ASB is still extremely busy, planning events and honoring all of our students for their hard work. Last week, we held an academic honors breakfast for our students with a GPA of 3.8 and above. And this week is teacher appreciation week where we get to recognize and celebrate all of our teachers. Link Crew and ASB also got to celebrate our incoming class of Dire Wolves yesterday at the New Tech Welcome to the Pack Day, where the class of 2028 was given a tour of CCNTH and did a photo scavenger hunt. We have 109 new students from outside of the district and five who are new to the area. Link Crew is also helping to plan a field day at CCNTH for elementary schoolers from Ocean View Elementary on May 23rd. For our ASB events, we have our prom spirit week next week and prom is on Saturday, May 18th. The theme of the dance is a royal evening. Our Be Strong Life Club is hosting a prom proposal contest for free tickets to the dance. After prom, we will start our senior activities and celebrate the class of 2024. Our senior events include senior sunset, senior awards night, grad bash at Universal Studios and senior week. Our graduation is on June 8th and we will also hold a summer send-off for all of our students.
Now on to community and academics. Our freshmen have just begun their Justice League project. This project is a collaboration with their biology and research and communication classes. Through this project, they will work with a group of their peers to solve a crime by studying forensics and creating a fun short video. They have also just attended a field trip to the Johnson Ranch Trail to study ecology and ecosystems. In their research and communications class, they have also just completed their mock job interviews. This taught them what to do during an interview and how to prepare for them. The sophomores are starting their environmental exploratorium project. This project is a collaboration between American Studies and Chemistry. This will deepen their understanding of contemporary environmental issues. They will also create an interactive and informative booth that displays what they have learned and they will then present to 112 fifth and sixth graders from Shell Beach Elementary. The juniors have just started their Shark Tank project. This is a project where we create a 90-second pitch for a product or service of our creation and a business plan to a panel of entrepreneurs. Along with this, we learn about personal finance and how to prepare for the future. In physics, the juniors are working with a group to create a new type of technology and learning how to receive and send information from different technologies and how that information is transmitted. Even though our seniors only have a few weeks left of high school, they're still hard at work. Our advanced physics students just completed building and launching model rockets and completing a full data analysis and report. Now they are starting on creating Rube Goldberg machines, which is an extremely complicated system that completes a simple task. This Monday, May 13th, is our senior defense where our seniors present to their class and teachers about how CCNTH has helped them grow and prepare for their future plans. We invite the cabinet and board to come to our senior conferences next Monday, which is an all-day event. So if you would like to attend, please see Ms. Butler for our schedule. Lastly, we are so proud of our seniors for receiving large scholarships and making commitments to colleges. We are also proud of our four-legged classmate Tucci, the Labrador Retriever, for graduating his puppy training and moving on to the Guide Dog Refined Academy. He will get to walk the CCNTH graduation with his handler and trainer, Ashley Robinson.
Now on to athletics, band, theater and clubs. Many of our spring sports like swim and beach volleyball have come to an end. Our CCNTH athletes are currently participating in softball and track and field. We also have many exciting theater performances coming up that we invite you all to. NHS Theater will be performing Macbeth on May 18th and 19th at 2:00 PM in the Napo Mo High School Quad. And our Hysterical Artists Improv Team will be performing on May 24th for their birthday show. Then they will end their season with the Drama Showcase Awards. On campus, our clubs have continued to cultivate community. Our NAMI club hosted multiple guest speakers last month and invited service dogs to campus to cuddle with students. Our La Cultura club served Orchada and taught our students about Hispanic culture to celebrate Cinco de Mayo. Next, the garden club held their plant sale where they sold vegetable succulents and talked to their customers about promoting sustainability in our community. Dire Lights, our student-run candle business, also participated in the Rural Grandes Farmers Market on Saturday, May the 4th and sold our candles, body butters and bath bombs to the public. Lastly, our avid class has visited four schools in the last month and has continued to help our students develop the key skills they need to pursue higher education. Thank you so much for listening to my reports all year and for being so supportive of our schools. I've loved seeing many of you at our events and experiencing what makes CCNTH and project-based learning truly special. I've absolutely loved my time at New Tech and I'm currently choosing between six colleges for next year. I'm leaning towards Cal Poly Slow where I'll study kinesiology and be on the pre-medical track. As always, I would like to thank my leadership advisor, Chrissy Greco, and thank you so much for listening.
Next up, we have Aubrey Alice Stromso from Alternative Education. I think it's your turn, right, this month? Yeah, great, okay.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to share news and events from Lopez and Pacific View Academy. As we wrap up this school year, we have several fun events planned. Lopez has a couple of field trips in May, one to the Slow Museum of Art for a tour of the current exhibits and then to the Slow City Library for a tour and time in the teen area. Also, a group of Lopez students will hike to the Point San Luis Lighthouse for a guided tour of the lighthouse buildings and site. This is a special trip that many of us are looking forward to. The Lopez and PVA prom will take place in the Venetian Room at the Madonna Inn on May 17th with a masquerade theme. Students and staff will enjoy a three-course meal and dancing with DJ-led music. As for community building and recognition, the final Lopez Community Day will be at the end of the month with special activities like creating flower crowns and a water balloon toss. In the next two weeks, PVA and Lopez will host open houses. PVA is planning a barbecue and Lopez will include their spring awards night along with a progressive dinner. PVA will be posting senior spotlights of our graduates throughout May on social media and our school website. Check out the site and see where our graduates are heading in the fall. On April 24th, Lopez reached 40 days of being vape-free on campus, marking a significant milestone in our journey towards better health and wellbeing. We celebrated with some food shared at the end of advisory. Finally, regarding an academic spotlight, this week, many of the students in English classes are reflecting on four of the 21st century skills, communication, creativity, critical thinking and collaboration. They are analyzing how those skills are used right now at their age in school and outside of school. They are thinking about how those skills will be an integral part of their career someday. For my future goals, I plan to attend Allen Hancock to start my bachelor's degree in like education or something and then finishing it at either Cal Poly or another four-year college and then also getting my teaching credential. I want to be a teacher.
And hopefully teaching here in Luciemar.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Thanks Aubrey.
Thank you.
Next up is Savannah Willett from Napo Mo High School.
Hello everybody, I just want to extend my gratitude towards you guys for all the support you've shown towards myself and Napo Mo High School. As this will be my final report for the year, I'm gonna be sharing all of our events that we have for the rest of the school year. For this past weekend, we had our prom which was themed the Gala of Stars and Night of Elegance, which is kind of like a take on an award show. We had 230 students attend, which was great and we were really happy with that turnout. This week is also staff appreciation week, so to show how much we appreciate our staff, we're doing a delivery service. Each staff member can write down their favorite snack and drink and then our ASB class will deliver it to their classroom. This Friday, more than 90 seniors will be able to go on a memorable journey to Disneyland's California Adventure for Grad Night. And then following that, during the week of May 20th, we'll be celebrating Titan Olympiad Week, which also can be known as like our senior send-off week. The highlight of this week will be the rally showcasing our seniors accompanied by a senior video. The gym will be decorated with posters featuring each senior's name and all of their accomplishments throughout their four years at Napo Mo High School. On May 22nd, FFA will be hosting their final banquet of the year where they'll spotlight their students' accomplishments from the year and including their seniors. Each senior has the opportunity to submit a slide for their senior slideshow and then they'll have roughly like 20 seconds to present that slide to everybody who comes to the banquet. During the last week of school, our seniors will partake in all of the senior events. Monday, we'll have a senior breakfast followed by nostalgic visit to the elementary schools to reminisce on old memories. That evening, we'll have the senior awards, seniors will be recognized for their academic achievements, boards and scholarships. Tuesday, they'll have the senior picnic at Middle Park followed by the pool party on Wednesday. Thursday will be dedicated to graduation rehearsal and then leading up to the final rehearsal on Friday and then graduation itself. In addition to all of those, we have a lineup of other notable events, including Titan Awards Night, which is for everybody else at the school, the Boat Regatta, the avid senior celebration, the ASB banquet and a whole bunch of other things. Before I finish, I want to introduce the new ASB executive president. She's not able to be here today due to softball, but it's gonna be Nora Reed and I wish her the best of luck. Once again, I want to thank you all for your continuous support that you've shown myself and my school and I hope you guys have a wonderful rest of the school year and summer. Thank you.
And Savannah, what are your plans, what are you considering after?
I'm gonna go to Questa for one year to finish my associate's degree and then transfer to a four-year.
Awesome, cool, thank you. And next up is Kayla Sessana from AG High School.
Good evening everyone, thank you for inviting me back to share what's been going on at AGHS. First, I'd like to share what our leadership program has been up to. Two Saturdays ago, ASB hosted a prom where we had 621 students attend. This event proved to be a memory-making for students and their guests. Last Friday, Link Crew hosted their annual Senior Signing Day event where hundreds of seniors shared with their peers their future plans. Their quad was filled with balloons, pennants and cupcakes. All three leadership classes have been busy preparing for Greek Week, a week filled with class competitions. This week, our class officers began drafting teams to compete in daily lunchtime activities. In addition, we are excited that we have had 16 advisory classes sign up to participate in the open category for our Boat Regatta competition. Last week, we hosted Paulding, St. Pat's and Coastal Christian eighth-grade students. We toured them around campus while showcasing our dance company, choir and drama department, and today we hosted Judkins. Next, I'd like to share with you updates on our clubs and programs. Our Hangout Club hosted their first-ever inclusion week, excuse me, with multiple lunchtime activities and then sent Special Olympics with 25 athletes. Our Health Club competed last week in Bakersfield against 25 teams and placed third, beating out both valleys and local schools in Slow High School. FNL is currently planning their FNL Fest that is happening May 17th from 6:00 to 11:00 PM. This event includes watching movies, video games, laser tag, a raffle and food. The pool is also open for open swim and hangout. The event is to publicize their club and to help bring awareness to safe driving and underage drinking and the entry is $5. Now into academics, Mr. Tally, our live science teacher, is taking his students on a fishing trip to Port San Luis to catch fish and learn about all our local economic, or not economics, that's not, so science, sorry. He would like to thank the Rotary Club of Rural Grandes and Dr. Fawcett for their generous support. Our AP students have a busy two weeks ahead and over 500 students are testing over the next two weeks. This Friday, we host a newer tradition we call Senior Galia Day where students have earned such items as a 4.0 gold tassel, a biliteracy medal, CTE cords, Give Back 250, CSF cords and top 10 medals. Now into the arts, our dance company performed a sold-out crowd last Wednesday. There were 27 performances and a special senior tribute to the eight seniors graduating. Currently, our drama department is preparing for their spring musical Hello Dolly, which runs in two weeks. And our annual art show is happening May 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, is being put on in this boardroom. The event celebrates AG students on campus, drawing, painting, ceramics and AP studio art will be showcased. We highly recommend you coming and support our AGHS artists. And finally, in athletics, last Saturday, our beach volleyball placed first in CIF and was the first ever for the school, first ever beach volleyball CIF. Our Boys Varsity Volleyball Team finished strong in league and tonight is hosting our semifinals for CIF. And our incoming ASB president, Banyan Wetzel, is actually on the volleyball team, so he was unable to make it tonight. But Bany is amazing and I'm so excited to pass down the torch to him. Our Boys Track and Field took first place in league and the girls took second. Our Boys Swim was second in league and the girls placed third. Our notable statistics include that AGHS has hosted 273 events slash games on campus this year and 19 tournaments. We have earned two section D1 titles for this school year. And we are the only school that has every single team in the upper league. And finally, we have over 900 athletes, which is more than the population of schools in our county, a testament to our coaching staff, booster support and parent involvement. As I'm quickly heading into the last few weeks of school as a senior, all of above reminds me of why I'm so proud to be an Eagle. Next fall, I plan to head to Boise State to study business with a minor in marketing. I will forever be thankful for this opportunity and I will take all I have learned to college next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you Kayla and thank you to everybody here tonight. I want to open it up to my colleagues to offer any sort of thanks or...
It's just exciting to have you ladies present to us and I'm so excited for the education ahead of you. Just your self-assuredness and confidence in yourself, you're gonna be fantastic.
I just want to thank you, it takes a busy person to be accountable and to put their time towards something like this. So I really want to say thank you for taking time on these Tuesdays to come and speak to us and give us the news and we just wish you the best in your future.
Ms. Santos.
I would just like to say that it's wonderful to see you young ladies up here speaking to all of us. I know it's not something we do every day, but it makes us proud to know that you went to one of our schools and showcasing what you can do and what not to do. So good luck in the future and come back, we've got some stars going.
I just wanted to say congratulations to all of you and go get them.
Thank you so much for your dedication and I'm sure you're gonna take memories, you're gonna see so much out there. You all are gonna be definitely.
I'll also concur, I mean, thank you on top of everything else you've got going on to dedicate the first Tuesday of the month to come here and so wonderfully represent your schools and represent the districts is a highlight for us to sort of, to keep us connected to your campuses. So, so thank you for that, thank you for that ongoing commitment. We have a little something as a token of our appreciation, I want to invite you up, we'll hand this out and we're gonna, Ms. Jacobs is gonna take one final photo and then you are released. So exciting, I almost started quoting Mr. Robertson about he was them and then he became us, that's the possibility. Now I turn to items of interest from the board, but any board member like to offer? Ms. Naomi Pernier?
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, I am school board trustee area number three, Andrea Naomi Pernier, representing the communities of Helcian, Oceano and Ruhr. I would like to take this time to express my profound gratitude and appreciation to our dedicated teachers and support staff for their tireless efforts in shaping the minds and future of our students. To our teachers, thank you for your unwavering commitment to providing a nurturing and inclusive learning environment and your unwavering belief in the potential of every student matters in the Luciemar Unified School. To our support staff, because of your necessary contributions to all our schools, from maintaining a safe and welcoming environment to providing critical support and services to our teachers. Collectively, that ensures all students' success in Century 21 learning. I'm very proud and grateful to serve alongside you. Your commitment and your passion for inclusionary opportunities for all students is what makes Luciemar Unified School District number one. A sincere thank you to you.
Thank you Ms. Naomi Pernier. Any other trustees, items of interest? Ms. Kandel?
Yeah, I want to acknowledge National Teacher Appreciation Week. A retired teacher myself, I know that it's incredibly important and difficult job and I commend all of our teachers and lucky to have the teachers that we have. And then it's been a busy couple of weeks, I attended a conference in Shell Beach on governance issues. I was able to go to Branch and AG to surprise our Teacher of the Year and our Classified Employee of the Year. And I attended the CTE Spring Showcase, which was really fun and exciting to see the things that students are doing through our CTE programs. And this last weekend, I attended the California Distinguished Schools Award Ceremony for AG High School and Poly. And that was quite an honor to be there, Disneyland Hotel. So I'm proud to represent this district.
Thank you Ms. Kandel. Ms. Mayor?
I also attended the conference in Shell Beach and I always leave with something from there and I got a quote. The environment we create for people to work in is the same environment where students learn. And I thought, that's a good one, I wrote that one down to keep. I also attended the CTE Showcase, Ms. Butler, I saw her here earlier, she and I have a contest going now. Two years in a row, we have both been on the floral arrangements from Napo Mo High School and I upped my bid this year and she matched it. All of that goes towards scholarships, very proud of our CTE program, the showcase is wonderful. Bigger crowd this year than we've ever had, I think. I also delivered strawberries to Grover Heights in honor of our teachers there. And as I was leaving, the Grover Beach Police Department was delivering coffee, so it was really nice to see them and we all had the same idea in mind of honoring our teachers. It was a busy week, also attended Branch and AG for our Teacher of the Year and Classified Employees of the Year, so it's nice that tax season's over and I'm available.
Thank you Ms. Mayor. I'll just say, I mean, I attended the conference as well and I congratulate, congratulations, thanking to my colleagues for again, at some point, all of us attended that conference over those couple of days. So our commitment to continue learning and modeling that behavior that we want in this district is well-appreciated and noticed. I got to then attend some employee spotlights at Fair Grove and AG High School, which is always fun. And right now, it's always bittersweet because the last couple of them, we were spotlighting retirees, right? So I'm glad we were able to sort of celebrate them on their way out, but I wish they weren't on their way out. But that was, that was a lot of fun. And then I also want to just thank, I know it's teacher appreciation followed closely by classified appreciation. And I just think the employees we have in this district really exemplify what it means to be Team Luciemar and put our kids first. So I thank you for that, for walking that walk and showing up every day for our kids, so it is truly appreciated. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Fawcett for the superintendent's report.
Thank you Vice President Stewart. I just want to echo the sentiments that all of you shared about teacher appreciation week and the classified school employee week coming up. We just heard from our wonderful student reps, all the activities and programs and scholarship that they have access to on our campuses and none of that would be possible without our outstanding teachers and our outstanding support staff. So we're lucky to have such a great team in Team Luciemar. The board did get a chance to deliver out the strawberries on Monday to all the campuses for all the staff to celebrate teacher appreciation week and then we have another delivery of candies going out next week for Classified Employee Week. So we're excited to do that activity as well. And then I was also able to attend with trustee Candell and Assistant Superintendent Dixon and the Paulding and AGHS teams to receive their distinguished school awards through the CTE at Disneyland and it was a phenomenal turnout. It was a lot of fun just to kind of get to know the staff and I'm here about all the great work they've done over the year to earn those awards. And then the CTE Showcase, it was outstanding turnout, it was a record-breaking turnout. Just a quick shout out to Kristen Anderson for all of her hard work in leading the charge in CTE and all of our wonderful CTE teachers continuing to build their programs and make them relevant to industry standards and the partners that they work with and the businesses in our community. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. And now we turn to the business of the district. As a reminder, any member of the public may comment on agenda items as each item is presented. If you wish to address the board, please complete a speaker card, they're located at the entrance to the boardroom. We have yellow speaker cards for items that are on this evening's agenda and then we have blue speaker cards for items that are not on the agenda but within the business, the purview of the business of the district. Each speaker is allotted up to three minutes with a total of 20 minutes for each agenda item. We welcome that as a valued part of the process. For those who may not know, the Brown Act prohibits us from responding to public comment. So it's really just an opportunity for us to hear testimony about what, about your point of view, but we, it's not a time for public dialogue or public debate. So just know that. We also have in the back of the agenda, an outline of the decorum, the expectations and the behavior that we want to model for our students because ultimately we are modeling for our students. We also have translation services available, so if anybody needs Spanish translation services available, just let us know when you come up to the podium and we have it available to you. And with that, we will begin the business of the district and move on to consent calendar items one through 10. Would any member of the board like to pull an item for further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment, if any member of the public would like to comment on consent calendar items one through 10, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're gonna close the public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Move approval of consent calendar items one through 10.
Second.
Motion by Santos, second by Mayor, roll call vote please.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Del?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Stewart?
I.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Which brings us to reports and presentations, resolutions and proclamations, item number 11, a report on the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, update, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, it is that time of year again when we discuss the Local Control Accountability Plan. So some of these things will be reminders that we'll share this evening for the board and for members of the public who are listening and then also some highlights of our, our plan for this coming school year. So the LCAP stands for Local Control Accountability Plan. And as I share every year, it's important to note that the LCAP is intended to help close the gap for students who can't easily reach grade level proficiency. So some brief details, what is the LCAP? It describes actions that the district takes that are principally directed towards students in the unduplicated count to increase or improve services to them. The students in the unduplicated count are low-income students, foster youth and English learners. However, most of the actions in the LCAP benefit all students. We also ensure that there are some items that address students with disabilities and other significant subgroups as you'll see in this year's LCAP when it's complete for your review. Some other details, we receive as a district supplemental and concentration grant funding that is driven by those three groups of students in the unduplicated count. Supplemental funding comes to every district, concentration grant funding comes to districts that have 55% or more students in the unduplicated count. We're having right around 60% and that has been very consistent. It is due to a huge push at our school sites to ensure that all families complete their data confirmation early in the year so we can make sure that all of our students have that income verification and things of that nature. When we started doing data confirmation and the income verification online, we were able to increase that percentage. We found some families that didn't do those old paper forms, that's been a really good innovation in the past few years. The LCAP plan itself articulates these parts, we tell the district story and the goals for our students. Our goals match the district goals that we, that the board identifies from year to year. We talk about our process from gathering input from educational partners, which I'll share with you this evening. We also identify those actions that we take and the metrics that we measure them by. And then there's a section that is known by its acronym as the EIFL, like the Eifl Tower, but it stands for the Increased or Improved Services for Foster Youth, English Learners and Low-Income Students. And of course, we talk about the budget that we, how much we'll spend to do these actions. So highlights of our current plan, as you may recall, this time last year, we were excited to share that we had been saving money in intentional carryover to bring back our supersized intervention plan into the LCAP for this year, which we have done. And so that's been great, we have over 40 intervention teachers out at our school sites doing wonderful work for our students across all levels. We have added in additional campus supervisors that we added with one-time dollars, but we're preserving those positions for a longer-term consideration in the LCAP. We increased our student tutoring budget to ensure we have opportunities for before and after-school tutoring. We recognized that we needed more hotspots for students to be able to access the internet at home, so we increased that budget. And we continue strong support for professional learning needs, including our Summer Institute that we do every year and we'll be planning for again the week before school starts in August. Where are we in the process now? We are finalizing our metrics and gathering data for the 24-25 LCAP, we're almost done with that. We have a new three-year plan, so the LCAP you'll review in June is the start of a new three-year cycle. And of course, as the state does from time to time, they have updated the template, so there's a few new parts. We continue to conduct educational partner outreach for feedback on the existing LCAP and plans for next year, which I'll review in more depth on the next slide. But one of the primary ways that we do that is through survey instruments and we have done that over the last month and a half. We sent out a survey to parents and guardians and had 747 responses, that survey was sent in English and in Spanish. We surveyed our entire staff with 364 responses and we also surveyed our high school students and the vast majority of our high school students responded with over 1,700 responses. So what did they have to say? Our parent survey focused as sort of the top indicated interest areas for parents, they were interested in before and after-school options. I highlighted the ELOP or Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan there because with that funding stream, we're able to accomplish many of those things. So that is high interest to our families and we'll continue to work on our ELOP plan to help provide additional opportunities. So although we don't always talk about all of those things in the LCAP, because that's referring to the supplemental and concentration grant funds, we have growing options for our families and we're very excited about Summer Blast 2.0 that's going to be happening this summer, but also before and after-school options. Also, high interest in all three categories, as you will see in the area, our goal of health and well-being is increased and strong support for counseling and therapist support. But our parents said that, our staff said that and our high school students said that too. And so it's a wonderful thing that we've been able to increase counseling through the LCAP and maintain that for these last few years. Thank you to the board for your support of that. Our staff agreed with counseling and therapist support and also was interested in more intervention opportunities for students. And our high school students, interestingly, for the first time that I've seen this in the survey that we've given, indicated strongest support for additional support for our English learners. And so that was really wonderful and I thought empathetic and generous of our students to identify. I am glad to say, and we've talked about this in other reports, that we have added a second elementary newcomer class at Napa Elementary, which we've shared with the board in the past. We are also planning to add additional sections of newcomer support at Napa High School next year, which won't be funded through the LCAP, but other parts of it are presented in the LCAP. And so that's because we've had a lot of newcomers come into our area, just it's increasing the amount of students who are experiencing an American school for the very first time. And so we have increased supports accordingly. And we continue to look for and refine both curricular programs and other types of professional learning support that will help our teachers provide those key opportunities for our English learners. So I just thought that was really great to see that our students highlighted that as an area of interest. Planned additions for this coming year, LCAP is when I bring it back to you in June. The majority of our intervention teachers are back out of the LCAP, but that doesn't mean they're gone, we've been planning for this for many years. We're moving them back to one-time funding for one more year, all of that COVID relief money that we've been spending down in accordance with the rules provided by the state and federal government. You'll see a new goal in the LCAP, we've had two-goal LCAP for quite some time, one on student learning and one on health and well-being. This year, the new template requires that for any school site that qualifies for equity multiplier funding, that we have a focus goal for them. And the one school site that we have that qualifies for that is Lopez High School. So with the leadership of newly-appointed principal Keith Gladhill and current principal Jennifer Bowen, we've conducted a very robust educational partner feedback session. And so that goal will really focus on increased counseling and therapy support as well as increasing, the board may remember that Lopez is our school that uses the Yonder pouches for their cell phones. And so they are interested in extending that contract, it's pretty expensive, so it's rather cost prohibitive for most of our big schools, but Lopez with its size is able to do that. So we're looking at that and then some additional sub-release time for teachers to work together. Lopez, as a side note, also qualifies for continuous support and improvement funding, you'll read about that when you read their school plan for student achievement. And on that side of the house, we're focusing on academics and really looking for specific supports for student learning in the continuation environment. When students make it to the continuation high school, they have made it there because they have struggled in our comprehensive high school and are credit deficient. So our staff at Lopez is really interested in doing some workaround, not only how those students can accrue credit to graduate, but also how we can ensure that they're really meeting those learning targets that we identify in Luciamar as critical for progression to their post-graduation plan. So because they have these two funding streams, one of which appears in the LCAP, they have a really great chance to do some really cool work and we look forward to seeing that develop over the next year. We have some additional actions that I listed as cost-free in the LCAP that describe efforts to deal with all of the subgroups that we have that are in the red on the California school dashboard. So most of our schools have one or sometimes more subgroups that in one area or another on the dashboard have shown up in the red zone, meaning that's their lowest performance level. And so our principals work very hard with their guiding coalitions and leadership teams to identify school-level actions that they'll take. And for example, chronic absenteeism is one that we have room to improve, although we're on the upswing, we have certain subgroups at certain sites that we need to see some improvement with. And so one of the things that we plan to do is continue to reflect on our pre-SARB and SARB processes and also to continue to do early outreach to those families when we start to see them have a patterned absenteeism. That doesn't cost any money, that just costs time and so that's why it's a cost-free action. That's one example, doing my big hand talking, I get excited about the LCAP. And then we talked this week at cabinet and we'll be sharing with elementary principals, we've had a really great opportunity this year to onboard our big elementary music plan through Proposition 28. We've added additional electives at our middle school and high school level. And you may remember that when we were describing that plan to you around this time last year, we set aside some additional funding to do some work with Children's Creative Project out of Santa Barbara County Office of Education to allow visiting artists to come in and do some lessons for our schools in the area of theater and visual arts. And that has been good, but I would say an uneven application, we've had some great visiting artists, some that haven't really matched exactly what we've needed. So as we are continuing to build our music program, we are going to spend another year with the 20% of that Prop 28 funds that we can use for things that are not staff to buy more instruments. And so we want to continue that opportunity for our elementary sites to work with either bringing in a visiting artist or, you know, investing in some other way, so we'll do an additional one-time site allocation. And we're hopeful that after one more year of a big buy of instruments, that we'll be able to continue that effort in Prop 28 in the years to come. So you'll see that there, which is kind of new news that we talked about this week. That's on, that's an example of ongoing educational partner feedback. Those educational partners are our principals that said, this is working great, let's keep something like this going. So we still welcome feedback, the LCAP is not complete, the LCAP is, we have a few more steps to go, as the board will remember. After this, we finish writing the LCAP, which is a collaborative effort from my office and the business office. And then it will go on public review for 10 days before its final approval. So because our two board meetings in June are one week after another because of our graduation week, we put it in the district budget on public review a few days before that first meeting in June. I'll come and report it to you and you'll see it and get to read it and enjoy it. And then it will be on, continue to be on public review up until the day that we bring it back for final approval. After that time, pending your approval, we'll send it on to the County Office of Education in San Luis Obispo, who will be our final authority who approve LCAPs based on behalf of CDE. So until that time, the door is open for the public, for our staff, for our students to continue to offer ideas and we see what we can do to potentially incorporate it in the LCAP itself or in other funding sources, as I shared, like in the ELOP funding, which is another way to be helpful. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon, questions from trustees, Ms. Mayor?
The survey, do we have a breakdown, elementary, middle school, high school, anything like that?
For parents?
Yeah.
We do, this is probably Mr. Gimlin's least favorite survey, as he will like nod along back there because some of our families have students at multiple levels and they just fill it out one time. So what we ask of a parent who has a family with multiple levels, they can kind of select, I am associated with elementary school and middle school. So we can break that down based on those results. We have chosen to keep the survey anonymous because, other than that, because we want to ensure that people offer their kind of unvarnished feedback. But we can provide those results by level if you're interested to see them.
And then about staff, what about staff?
Staff identify the group that they're associated with, so certificated, classified or management.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, it is.
Any other questions, Ms. Santos?
When you're bringing visiting artists, how do you, how do you find?
This year, we've worked with the Children's Creative Project, which is organized out of the Santa Barbara County Office of Education. They do a really wonderful job and many of our elementary sites have worked with Children's Creative for decades. And so they source visiting artists from San Luis Obispo County and Santa Barbara County and probably beyond, I don't know the details on that, and help match their availability both geographically and in the time period that we're interested in having them come in. So we have a few schools that have had, been able to create relationships with other visiting artists that are local that they contract with individually. But for the most part, we go through Children's Creative Project.
Okay, and when you're talking about artists, you want to explain a little bit what type of art?
Sure, we were looking this year because the district chose to invest in music, we didn't need to have visiting musicians come for those sorts of lessons. So what we were really focused on was the other areas of visual and performing arts, which is visual arts, so painting, drawing and the like, theater and dance. Dance is also part of our PE, our elementary PE standards, in fact, our PE standards up and down the line. So for the most part, what we ended up doing was focusing on visual arts and theater. And we were able to have our students at the elementary level have 10 lessons over the course of the year in one of those two things. So first graders, for example, might have visual arts where second graders had a theater opportunity. And it's been, it's been pretty good, as I've shared, we've had some really great matches with visual artists and theater artists and some that just didn't match exactly what we needed here in Luciamar. So by giving even more local control over to the principals and their leadership teams with this allocation, we're hopeful that with our support as needed, they'll be able to find someone that will really match the interests of their school community.
Thank you.
Any other questions from trustees? Seeing none, we'll go to the public, if any member of the public would like to comment on agenda item number 11, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm gonna close the public, close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment.
Just to see the new template.
It's exciting, Mrs. Mayor.
I'm just excited to the stakeholder input that we get to and the educational partners, that is a vital part of this process, right? That we're not creating LCAP in a vacuum, right? We're talking to people that are affected by it, which is great. I will also share that it's been one of Ms. Santos' lifelong dreams for us to have a kazoo band in this district. So as we're purchasing instruments, if we want to do a kazoo band.
They're called recorders.
Okay.
We do, we do have a recorder unit already, there's something going around on the internet that says nothing can, there's nothing that can't be solved without a quick blast of three blind mice on a recorder and so our students get to learn three blind mice on a recorder. But kazoo's, I think, has some merit, Ms. Santos.
The reason for that is because years ago, when we first started soccer, we heard about it and everything, public didn't know anything about it. So we got together, a group of us, and started a team of sorts. And so then as it grew from there, somebody said, what's soccer? So we put them in the Christmas parade, I mean, the AG Parade Harvest Festival and we had all these kids in the Harvest Festival parade years ago with their sponsors. So now, now you know where soccer came from. But that's a good way of parents getting involved with their students to become part. So my idea was to, if we have a kazoo or recorders, they can have their own little marching band.
And it would be really cool if at some point, how miners used to do their coordinated like thing, kazoo's and dance moves.
It's so fun.
Future goal, future goal.
Right.
I love.
I'll be back.
Thank you, so we will see this back in June for first reading and for approval, so we thank you, Ms. Dixon. That will move us to item number 12, report first reading, the initial. Report First Reading: The Initial Proposal for Collective Bargaining from the Luciemar Unified Teachers Association to the Luciemar Unified School District for the 2024-2025 Negotiations. Dr. Handy?
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. I think we're pretty familiar with this agenda item, but I will make sure, because it is the kickoff to 2425, to make sure that I read it almost verbatim. Government Code 3540, commonly known as the RADA Act or EERA, governs employer-employee relations for California public school employees. Section 3547 specifically states, "Meeting and negotiating shall not take place until after the proposals have been presented to the public," which is a two-step process. The Sunshine Clause of the RADA Act requires that each party's initial bargaining proposal, the topics that will be negotiated, be presented for public comment at a publicized school board meeting prior to the beginning of the negotiations process. The public must be given a reasonable time to consider the proposal, comment publicly, and then comments are considered at a subsequent meeting of the governing board. The initial bargaining position of the Luciemar Unified Teachers Association is presented in the accompanying memo, Initial Proposal for Collective Bargaining for 2425 Negotiations with Luciemar Unified School District. And I'll review them for our public, specifically Article 6, Hours of Work. LMUTA proposes changes to hours of work. Article 9, which is class size, LMUTA proposes changes to those class sizes. Article 13, Health and Welfare Benefits, they propose changes in that arena as well. Article 14, Salaries. And the next one is, I think, meant to be Article 15, Benefits for Retired Certificated Employees. This item is for review only, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Handy. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. If any member of the public would like to comment on Item Number 12, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. Seeing none, this is a report, first reading only, so we will see this item come back in the future on Agenda Item. Thank you, Dr. Handy. Moving on to Item Number 13. Approval Resolution A-2324-21: Committed Fund Balance, Adult Education Fund 11. Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. The item before you is part of our yearly commitment of funds. And so we go back to 2009. The state said, we're going to make some changes to the accounting structure. And what ultimately occurred was the Government Accounting Standards Board, that nice acronym, GASB, did their issuance of Statement 54, and they said, if you would like to continue to use Fund 11 for adult education, then you need to commit those funds each year. So before you this evening is Resolution Number A-23-24, or 24-21, to commit said funds. So anything that's left over tied to adult education would then be committed at the end of the fiscal year to Fund 11.
Thank you, Mr. Eichberger. Questions from trustees? Ms. Naomi Vernier?
Yes. The last page, it says, President of the Board of Education. Do we want to?
No, that's okay. But if it passes, Colleen is still allowed to sign it as the president, President Martin. Any other questions? Any other questions from trustees? Seeing none, we'll open to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on Item Number 13, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, we'll move, close public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I move we approve Resolution A-2324-21: Committed Fund Balance, Adult Education Fund 11.
Second?
Motion by Mayor, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Naomi Vernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Which brings us to Item Number 14. Approval Resolution A-2324-22: Committed Fund Balance, Deferred Maintenance Fund 14. Mr. Eichberger?
So very similar to the Adult Education Fund with our deferred maintenance is Fund 14. So that same GASB ruling did also require us to commit funds for our deferred maintenance, which is our upkeep of our facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Eichberger. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on Item Number 14, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment.
I would just like to say, I think this is a great opportunity for the public to realize exactly where these funds are going. It's a specific fund. And when people make comments like, you're spending our money in this nap, drive around, folks, go to our schools, see what the maintenance people are doing. When they wake you up at seven in the morning because they're pounding on something, it's because it's for us. Something good's going to come out of it. So it's just, I think it's nice to see that it's going to be in one account, and they can go check it out.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval of Resolution A-2324-22: Committed Fund Balance, Deferred Maintenance Fund 14.
Second?
Motion by Candell, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Vernier? Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Which brings us to items scheduled for discussion, possible action. Item Number 15. Approval Award of Contract to Precon Industries Inc. as General Contractor at Oceanview Elementary School for New Classroom Wings, Project Number 0556 out of Bond Fund 21. Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you. This is a project that has been long awaited. The drawn-out DSA process has finally been approved. We went out to formal bid, and this evening, you have an opportunity to see the winning bid, which was Precon Industries for $3,694,000. And it will create six new classrooms at Oceanview, four standard 960 square feet classrooms, and then two of our jumbo classrooms for transitional kindergarten or kindergarten that are 1,350 square feet that have the embedded restroom.
Thank you, Mr. Eichberger. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on Item Number 15, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment.
I would just like to say there again, Joe, public needs to go out and see exactly what's being built on district school grounds. And, you know, here's where your money's going. This is what we're doing. So this is what your bond money has done. So enjoy.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. And I will say, actually, three of those are really close in the scheme of ballpark, so that's encouraging that it's, we're going to get competitive bidding and the best bank for our dollar.
Reminds you of Earn, huh?
Yep. I was doing that in honor of Mr. Doll. And with that, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I move we award, I move that we approve the award of contract to Precon Industries Incorporated as general contractor at Oceanview Elementary School for New Classroom Wings, Project Number 0556, Bond Fund 21.
Second?
Motion by Mayor, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Naomi Vernier? Candell?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Which brings us to Item Number 16. Approval Second Reading: Revision of Board Policies, Administrative Regulations, and Exhibits. Dr. Fawcett?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. This is the second time these are before you. I also want to let you know, too, that we're not going to be bringing any more board policies, administrative regulations, exhibits, or bylaws for the remainder of the year because we have a lot of reading to do with the school site plans that you're going to be seeing over the next few meetings. So we'll start that back up in the fall. So this is the last item that I'm asking for your action on when it comes to these policies.
I'm going to have my colleagues, like, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on these items.
Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll open up to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on Item Number 16, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval of Second Reading, Revision of Board Policies, Administrative Regulations, and it's been Exhibits, excuse me.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Santos, second by Naomi Vernier. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Naomi Vernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor? Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Which brings us to Item Number 17. Action on Student Expulsion, Student Discipline Case Numbers 23-24-032, 23-24-033, 23-24-038, and 23-24-039. Ms. Candell?
Yes, I would like to move approval of the agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion. The Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel from all schools in the district student cases number 23-24-032 for violation of Education Code Sections 48900A2 and 4890081 and 48900R and 48900... dot four. Number, case number 23-24-033 for violation of Education Code Section 4890081 and 48900R and 48900O. And case number 23-24-040 for violation of Education Code Section 48900C. It is further moved that the Board adopt the Recitals, Agreements, Rehabilitation Plan, and Readmission Review Date is set 4th in April 23, 2024, and April 25, 2024, and May 3, 2024, Agreement and Stipulation for Immediate Expulsion.
Second?
Motion by Candell, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Vernier?
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We continue.
Okay, I'd like to move approval of the agreements and stipulations for immediate expulsion with suspended enforcement. The Board of Education finds there is cause to expel from all schools in the district student cases number 23-24-038 for violation of Education Code Section 48900C, number 23-24-039 for violation of Education Code Section 48900C. It is further moved that the Board adopt the Recitals, Agreements, Rehabilitation Plans, and Readmission Review Dates is set 4th in April 26, 2024, and April 29, 2024, Agreements and stipulations for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Okay.
Motion by Candell, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Naomi Vernier?
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Which brings us to public comment on items not on the agenda. This is items not on this evening's agenda, but within the purview of the business of the district. I do have one speaker card for Mr. Henry Pardini, so Mr. Pardini, if you would come up and we have the timer, Dr. Handy will start the timer. When you start speaking, when you see it go to red, that means your time is... I know, we're ready.
All right, my name is Henry Pardini, although everybody knows me as Chip, except for the IRS and my mom when she was mad at me. I've been a resident up in Cypress Ridge since December of 2004. Having already sent my children through school, I normally have not been active in board proceedings. But after the most recent flyer that went out with a potential bond being brought up again for vote by the citizenry, I decided I wanted to come forward and have some questions. Now, understanding the format that we can't have a dialogue, I do have some things that I would be grateful if the Board would consider, you know, providing information to the community. So like, for example, things, questions that came to mind that I had was, what's been the enrollment either increase or decrease over the past six years? So how the, how the student population has grown or decreased? And with that, how many students, if any, have transferred from other districts, either being other slow school districts or districts, neighboring districts like Santa Maria or Cut into it? Does the Board have any visibility to any major housing developments or projects that have been approved or in the planning stage that would cause a dramatic increase in the student population in the next six years? As we all know, with new developments of any size comes usually developer-provided schools and other fees to, you know, offset any of, any of the costs that the district would come. And then I made an assumption, looking, everything I'm talking about today comes either from the updated master plan from January, the bond information that's posted on the website, or information from the niche or niche organization that carries information about student population and schools and ratings, et cetera. And so please excuse me because I am not, you know, as informed as I would like to be, but those were only my reference points. So a few things I wanted to bring out. I made an assumption that the population that was shown in the plan of classrooms and students included any Measure I funds for building of new classrooms or replacement of portable classrooms. So I made that was as an assumption. And so when I looked at things, I saw that we have 11 elementary schools, six have 11 to 15 students, four have 16 to 20, and one has 24 students on average. Now, I know I just looked at classroom and size, so I don't know the demographic distribution per class. Three middle schools, two at 15.3 students, and one at 21 students. Is that my time already?
It is your time, so if you could wrap up, sir.
All right. So anyhow, what, what I was trying to bring is, is I looked at, last bond proposal was 170 million. The district received another 21.3 million dollars in matching funds and grants, making it 190 million. By the school's own flyer, they estimate there's 250 million dollars of additional funding required to bring the schools to do all the things that the school district wants to do, which is close to 440 or half a billion dollars. And yet, the district is only asking for 149 million, which says to me that the district's going to be coming out in a few more years with another bond measure. And just so that you know, and I'll finish up because I am a senior citizen, the impact of these changes. So the first school bond added 417 dollars to my tax bill. The proposed bond measure will add another 286 dollars to my tax bill. And Questus Bond measured added 230 dollars. Now, 286 spread out over 12 months may not seem like much, it's about 59 dollars. However, the projected COLA increase for people on social security is less than 59 dollars for next year, which means that if that bond measure goes through and it's approved, I will again have left spending power along with all the other seniors in the community just because of the bond measure. I will gain nothing. So I have a lot of other questions, but if there's an opportunity to meet with some people from the district not in an open forum, so I can become more knowledgeable, I would welcome that, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Pardini.